Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, December 18th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for December 18th, 2023. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Thank you. Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Bremwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the great liberty, justice, and moral freedom. We are one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, and before we get started tonight, I just want to take a moment to say happy holidays and happy new year to everyone. I'm guessing a lot of you aren't going to be here at the end of the meeting, so I thought I would say that at the very beginning, just to make sure we get a chance to hear it. You know, we, as a City Council, we sincerely appreciate this opportunity to serve you and serve this community. And it's been a very full year, we can say the least. A lot of great successes, a lot of great challenges, and we're looking forward to another great year of service for you. So, thank you very much for joining us tonight. With that, Adrian, you can kick us off.
We will move on to presentations. We have the Asphalt Paving Association of Iowa Awards for City Projects.
You almost didn't get them up there, Bob.
I don't remember them being that shy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Bob Schizzle, the Assistant City Engineer. It's really a privilege for me tonight to be able to share with you the recognition and awards that the City of Dubuque recently received for roadway improvement projects. On November 30th, city staff attended the Iowa Asphalt Paving Conference in Des Moines. At the conference, the city received four awards. Paul Davis, accompanied by the tremendous Public Works team here. Paul is holding the Metropolitan Paving Program Award for both the Public Works Department's 2023 Annual Asphalt Overlay Program. The Stoneman Road Reconstruction Project was also recognized, and John Dees should be up here joining us too, because he was project manager for that one. The Metropolitan Paving Award recognizes roadway paving projects from cities with populations greater than 10,000 people, which demonstrate a measurable benefit to the community through sound economic and environmental principles. The next series of awards, the Northwest Arterial State of Good Repair Project received three awards. Luke Rupp, in the blue there, Luke is holding up the Northwest Arterial Perpetual Paving Award that we received. The Perpetual Paving Award recognizes projects which are designed so that the asphalt pavement surface can be easily recycled and replaced at some point in the future. Perpetual pavements offer an innovative and sustainable approach to building long-lasting roadways that meet the needs of current and future traffic demands. Hugh McCarron, right there, is holding the Northwest Arterial Municipal Streets New Construction Smoothness Award. The smoothness award were presented for projects with the best ride quality of the finished roadway surface. Smooth roads are proven to last longer and provide a better fuel economy for the traveling public. And now we're saving the best of the best for last. Nate Stephan is holding the 2023 Robert M. Nady Award of Excellence. This is the grand champion award. The best overall paving project in the state of Iowa in 2023 was the Northwest Arterial State of Good Repair Project. So, it was truly an honor to receive these distinguished awards and accept those awards on behalf of the dedicated staff that are here that really made this happen, the mayor and city council, and the citizens of Dubuque.
Well, before we give you a hand and you all start walking away, because I know how that works, I want to say while you're standing right here, I don't think you get a whole lot of opportunities to hear from people just how much we appreciate the work you do on a daily basis. And this is us telling you that we absolutely appreciate the work that you do every single day. And I don't just say that as mayor, I say it as somebody who drives on all the streets that you just mentioned right there, and I see the difference, and I know what it's like. And when you go to other places, I won't mention any other cities, but it's not always as good. And I really, really appreciate the attention you pay to detail and the work that you do on a daily basis, no matter what the weather is, no matter what the conditions are, you're out there making it happen and making life better for us in Dubuque. So, thank you very much for everything, and congratulations. All right, I'm guessing that was the fun stuff, so let's keep going.
We will move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages two through five of the agenda.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for a separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here, do we have anyone virtually?
No virtual.
Okay. All right.
No input received.
City Clerk's office, okay. All right, and before I ask for a motion to the rest, I want to make sure I check in with Ms. Farber, because I believe Ms. Farber may have had one that she wanted to hold.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and if you could hear me.
Yes.
My voice succinct enough. I would like to have item number 23 removed for separate discussion.
All right, thank you, Ms. Farber.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number 23.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. So, on to number 23, Ms. Farber, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm asking to accuse myself from this vote due to the fact that I am the owner of Magoos Pizza, which is up for its renewal for its beverage license renewal.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Farber.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Jones.
I move to receive and file and approve number 23.
Second.
There is a resolution to adopt.
And adopt the resolution.
Okay, so, motion is to receive and file, adopt the resolution by Jones, second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye. Motion passes six zero.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is resolution approving the development agreement by and among the City of Dubuque, Iowa, 400 Ice Harbor LLC and Hodge Company providing for the sale of city-owned real estate to 400 Ice Harbor LLC and the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Rousell and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving the development agreement by and among the City of Dubuque, 400 Ice Harbor LLC, and Hodge Company providing for the sale of city-owned real estate to 400 Ice Harbor LLC, and the City of Dubuque providing for the sale of city-owned real estate in the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District to 400 Ice Harbor LLC, and the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. The key elements of the development agreement include the following: One, the developer must purchase an office facility located at 400 Ice Harbor Drive. Two, Hodge Company must maintain its existing 24 full-time equivalent employees and create 10 new full-time equivalent jobs at the new facility by October 1st, 2026. The 34 full-time equivalent jobs must be maintained through the term of the development agreement. Three, Hodge Company will receive 10 years of tax increment financing incentives in the form of semi-annual rebates. These incentives are calculated in relation to the number of jobs committed in the development agreement. Tax increment financing incentives are estimated to not exceed $296,598. Number four, 400 Ice Harbor LLC has a two-year option to purchase approximately .68 acres of city-owned parking property for $571,400. Number five, if 400 Ice Harbor LLC purchases city-owned parking property, city agrees to make a loan to 400 Ice Harbor LLC in the amount of $571,400 repairable over 10 years at 0% interest. Number six, 400 Ice Harbor LLC must obtain a revocable permit to construct two sidewalks on city-owned property adjacent to the facility. Number seven, the City of Dubuque will amend the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District Plan to accommodate the issuance of tax increment financing incentives. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt the attached resolution approving the development agreement by and among the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and 400 Ice Harbor LLC, and Hodge Company providing for the sale of city-owned real estate to 400 Ice Harbor LLC and the City of Dubuque providing for the sale of city-owned real estate in Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District to 400 Ice Harbor LLC and the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Yeah, come on up. If you would, please just state your name and address before you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Michael Fawn, and I reside at 2074 Creekwood Drive, and I'm here representing Hodge tonight. First of all, I want to thank you in consideration of this project. Hodge has called Dubuque home for the last 65 years. We tied down deep roots here and had tremendous growth over that 65-year history, from two employees in 1958 to over 1,200 employees operating in five states today. Over the last, I would say, three years, with that growth, we've experienced growth in a lot of operations, but we've had a need to increase our employee headcount, supporting our corporate services departments in accounting and finance, IT, marketing, HR, to support those various operations across our five states. With that, we've had a need for physical space and office space for those employees. And I would say over the last three years with COVID, everyone has really taken a step back to say, what is the need for physical space? Us, no different than any others, also had that consideration. But I think over the last couple of years, we've realized there is a need for physical space, and there's a need for us to be able to connect with our employees, to be able to collaborate, and really call Dubuque home and set up our headquarters here in Dubuque. So, over the last year, we've evaluated a handful of different properties, Ice Harbor being one of them, and quite frankly, checked a lot of the boxes. I know from myself personally, you know, moving here in 2013, this is a property that was amazing, and coming over the Wisconsin Bridge, it was sad to see a building of that nature in the Port of Dubuque sitting vacant. And in 2015, MSA had moved their operations in that building, but the other half of the building sat vacant. And what Hodge hopes to do is to really expand our footprint, extend the next chapter of the fourth generation of family ownership with Hodge, and really move our company forward. So, with that said, I would open up to any questions that the council has at this time.
Well, thank you, Michael, for your comments. We'll ask questions if we have them when we have our comments ourselves.
Perfect.
So, thank you very much.
You bet.
For your comments, appreciate it. Any others this evening? Anybody virtually?
There's not.
All right.
And no written input.
All right, back to the table then for any questions or discussion. Anyone? No one? No questions? No? Yeah? Well, let me just say then, you know, I definitely plan to vote for this. This is, it's wonderful to see the growth that's happening at Hodge, and very excited for your company and the fact that you are continuing to call Dubuque home after all these years. Like you said, fourth generation, it's just, it's exciting to see that. Couldn't agree with you more about bringing some life to some buildings that are there and haven't had that life in them in the Port of Dubuque, and that's just, it's great to see some action in that area of town as well. So, I think this is a great agreement, and appreciate your work on it, and all the city staff as well. All right, with that, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number two is resolution adopting the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District, version 2023.4.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the resolution adopting the amended and restated urban renewal plan, version 2023.4, for the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District. The City of Dubuque has entered into development agreements, including the issuance of urban renewal tax increment financing obligations with various developers over the past year. These projects need to be listed in the plan in order to provide the committed tax increment financing obligations in their respective development agreements. These development agreements include 799 Main, Chadwick Block, Farley &amp; Letcher, HGAPT, Clower Manufacturing Company, McCoy Group, NEA Neighborhoods Opportunity Zone Fund, Union at the Marina, and Virtual Velocity. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt a resolution adopting the amended and restated urban renewal plan, version 2023.4, for the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, do we have anything virtually?
No.
Thank you.
And no input.
All right. Back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing none and hearing none, motion on the table here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Do we have any public input this evening? Yeah, please, come on up.
Brad Plummer, 1041 Shady Oaks Drive, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I would like to address, I see on the agenda, a discussion about the wastewater recovery treatment center and the efforts around odor mitigation. And I would like to start by reading a letter that I have submitted to my representative, Katie Wethel. Dear Mayor, Council Members, and City Manager, I am writing to you regarding the odor issues emanating from the Dubuque Water and Resource Recovery Center. I appeared before the city council earlier this year to plead my personal dissatisfaction with the odor problems created by our resource center and its impact on our family and our ability to enjoy our household. Now I'm appealing to you on behalf of a much, much larger constituency of residents and business owners of the south end of Dubuque to express our complete disgust with the lack of progress in this matter. The past several weeks have realized pollution of a magnitude not realized in my 13 years as a resident on the south end of town. This is absolutely a pollution situation. Previously, the odor issues were largely contained to summertime with high humidity. However, since the arrival of additional commercial waste contributors, the problems have worsened severely. One week prior to this letter, the odor was the most offensive in recollection and beyond adjectives to describe in writing. For purposes of expedience, we should all stipulate that the problem is real and acknowledged as exhibited by your own agenda in previous minutes. However, it is evident that the actions taken to date are insufficient to rectify the situation, and we seem to be moving from excuse to excuse. We understand that there was a system failure related to ongoing maintenance performed by a third party, and that the city is contemplating recourse due to the same. It is also known that roughly 10 years ago, a significant capital expenditure was completed to enhance the recovery center. It is more than evident that the time since the composition of the composition of the waste intake has intensified due to external processing contracts, and the facility has failed to keep pace with the volume and intensity of the incoming waste. Recognizing that there is no such thing as a quick, immediate fix, we are proposing the following situation, or the following issues be contemplated immediately. First of all, in the long term, we ask the city allocate appropriate funds for an expert consulting firm to assess the entirety of the situation and solve for a long-term accommodation of our collective needs. In the upcoming budget cycle, we demand allocation for expert opinions and preparation for funds necessary on capital expenditures to resolve the situation. Currently, we are simply putting patches on the problem, kicking the can down the field. There are literally thousands and thousands of cities that do not have this problem. Dubuque wants to be seen as example, as an example, but I purport they do not want to be seen as an example in this light. In the immediate term, understanding that issues are not immediately repairable, we implore the city to please explore all avenues to mitigate the impact immediately. We understand that you are under contracts with private entities and various political subdivisions for waste intake, and that is magnifying our problem. The contracts aside, we urge the city's contract with its tax-paying citizens and businesses supersedes any outside contracts despite the impact that might have to city revenues or those waste customers. The city's obligation should be first to its citizens, the environment, and the businesses that have supported it far before the external inputs existed. Myself and the many constituents I represent in this letter hope for immediate, focused effort to fix this issue. This is not the first time that this has been aired in the public forum, but the problem is much more severe now than it was in the past. Myself and the constituents I represent are all positive supporters of this city, and we want nothing but the best for it. However, it's irrefutable that our environment, citizens, and businesses have suffered physical, emotional, and real economic loss due to the city's inability to resolve this problem. We collectively will consider taking any additional steps to rectify this if our current representation cannot resolve it. I'd like to add some color commentary that in the last couple of weeks, the intensity of this odor, as I said in my letter, is beyond adjectives. There was one event that I stopped home in between two different holiday obligations that I had to attend to let my dogs out and to pull in my trash cans. The smell was so offensive that I could barely stand it. When I got to the second event that I was going to, I actually had people comment, what is that, what is that smell on you? It was on my clothes, it was in my hair, it was inside of our homes. It used to be, again, this was only in the summertime with high humidity and the right winds, now it's on us in the wintertime, and it's actually getting into our homes. There were more than one time this past fall that I had to move guests inside off of my back deck or patio because we could not simply be outside. It seems as if there's an excuse every time from taking too long to contract with the consultants that you'd hired previously, to, you know, a failure of some contractor. In our business, we have to have redundancy for everything we do, IT, phones, physical presence, or we can't serve our clients. I think the expectation around processing waste for our city should be held to a significantly higher standard than what it has been held. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad, for your comments. Any other public input this evening? Seeing none here, do we have any virtual input?
No virtual.
Okay. Anything from the city clerk's office?
I'll just note that Mr. Plummer's letter that he referenced was uploaded to action item number two, as well as we received written input from Jordan Page, Chief Sustainability Officer with Tucker Freight at 1080 East 12th Street regarding action item number three.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. All right, last call. Okay, let's move on to action items then, please.
Action item number one is Greater Dubuque Development Corporation Quarterly Update.
Motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file and hear the report.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Turn it over to Rick Dickinson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, City Manager Mike Van Milligan, and most excellent staff of the City of Dubuque. My name is Rick Dickinson. I have the pleasure of serving as the President of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. And I'm here, and I reside at 205 Hill Street. Yes, I have Christmas decorations up, dutifully. I'm here tonight because we have an agreement with the City of Dubuque, the mayor and council, to provide a quarterly update of the activities of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation to both the mayor and council, city manager and staff, but most importantly, the citizens of the City of Dubuque. You are a major investor. The private sector is the largest investor in Greater Dubuque development, but the public sector is significant, and you are, of course, are a partner. Before I begin my report of the last quarter, and in fact, summary of the last calendar year, I do want to offer my recommendation and hope that the council favorably considers the ordinance that's on the agenda tonight for the trucking in downtown Dubuque. It was our pleasure to work with both trucking companies, manufacturers in our market, people that would be impacted by this decision and this ordinance. We were pleased to provide access for the city manager, made appointments with the city manager, met with many of these businesses so that the city could fully understand the pros and cons of this ordinance, and we think it's a reasonable compromise. In saying that, and providing our full support, and asking for your favorable consideration, I should also acknowledge that we realize that there's two sides to this coin, and that other people would prefer to not have truck traffic in downtown Dubuque, and we understand that. However, I believe the compromise will come with further action from the council in the RFP that has been sent out by the city for traffic study of Central Avenue. And that will be, I think, the point of potential compromise on the issue. RFP that has been sent out by the city for a traffic study of Central Avenue. And that will be, I think, the point of potential compromise on the issue, dealing with the question of shall it be two-way street, one-way street? Can we calm traffic by making it more pedestrian-friendly and still allow these essential businesses in our community to thrive and grow? So thank you for your favorable consideration of that. Our regional economy is strong. 2023 is a year of accomplishment. Few facts. Dubuque's unemployment, when I say Dubuque, I'm referring to the MSA Metropolitan Statistical Area of Dubuque, which is Dubuque County. We had 3.1% unemployment in the latest data, which was for October of 2023. That means there were 60,800 people working in Dubuque County. 54,200 of them live and work in Dubuque County, and the remaining 6,600 commute from all the surrounding counties contiguous to Dubuque in Illinois, Wisconsin, and Iowa. There are 1,700 folks who are unemployed, classified as being unemployed, looking for work. However, there are only 246 of our 99,000 citizens in Dubuque County that are collecting unemployment benefits. Let me repeat that. We have 60,800 people working in our MSA. We have 1,700 folks that identify themselves as unemployed, looking for work, but only 246 of them are actually collecting any unemployment benefits. Unemployed returning to work because of the largesse of their benefits is not a solution. In fact, it's a false statement. Our goals at Greater Dubuque Development talk about our success, and that relates to the last calendar year. Our goals include employment reaching 64,000. As I just shared, we're at 60,800. That brings us back to the COVID, pre-COVID days of unemployment numbers, but it's still a distance from our goal by 2027 of reaching 64,000. Construction, there's a success story. Our goal is to have $1 billion in construction by 2027. With a year and a half into our five-year capital campaign, we are $393,460,000 of construction. That includes $165 million in residential and $227 million in commercial. Our goal is to have that be more of a 50-50 split, but with what's going on with what I'm going to talk about in a bit in housing, we believe we will get to that number. Median household income, the goal is $76,000 by '27. We're at $73,495, far ahead of where we had hoped we would be at this point. Yes, part of that is due to inflation, but it's also employers in our market being more competitive and recruiting talent to our community. Median, the reduced poverty by 5%. We're at 10% today. We need to get to 9.5. The elimination of federal dollars through the COVID assistance has ended, and so that is resulting in some stagnation of poverty, but we do believe we will far exceed that goal by 2027. And population, our goal is 105,000. We're at 98,677. That is one of our most daunting goals. Our greatest challenge as a region is population growth and in turn workforce growth. Here's an example. There are 2,202 counties in the United States of America that have a population of 100,000 or less. Dubuque County ranks 96th nationally in job openings per capita, the top 4% in the United States. Great news, right? Well, yes, it means we've been very successful in assisting existing business and expanding and recruiting new business to our market, but there's a downside to it. It's a disproportionate, it's due to a disproportionate retirement in our market. The downside is we have too few people for the job openings that exist in our market, and it's not going to be fixed overnight. In fact, the cause of it dates back to the 1980s, when families left, and our demographic from 35 years of age to 55 years of age is under census data for most communities in the United States. We also have insufficient net in-migration to our community to have the workforce that we need. Traditional economic development was really focused on hard infrastructure. Your daddy's Economic Development Group, that doesn't apply to councilman Wethel, councilman Wethel, of course. The traditional economic development was about streets and infrastructure and bridges, chasing smokestacks, recruiting business. But successful economic development is still that, but that is secondary to soft infrastructure today. Examples, housing. Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, in collaboration with the city and East Central Intergovernmental Association, studied housing. We sat down with the city leadership, the mayor and council, and talked about changing and changes of process in order to stimulate housing, and the achievement has been discussed by this council at several meetings with over 2,000 units in some stage of development, and that will kick in in 2024 big time. Childcare, we studied the issue. Greater Dubuque Development retained consultant to come in and evaluate childcare from both a business perspective and the childcare provider's perspective. We tried to identify a change in process to achieve progress, and I'm pleased to say that on January 8th, the new facility that will be run by the Y, a development project by the Dubuque Initiatives, will be open for business. The first phase will include 120 children, and the second phase will be 90 children. This is one of three new childcare centers that will be built in Dubuque County. Over $8 million in state funding has come to Dubuque County with over a $20 million total investment in these three facilities. One in Dyersville, a $6 million project, 1.8 million of which was a state. The Cottingham and Butler Childcare Facility, which is under construction, the ground is, the basement is dug, that will have 200 children, received a $3 million grant from the state of Iowa, and Dubuque Initiatives received 2.15, and will be investing nearly $6 million in this new facility. This will increase the availability of infant care and the quality and affordability of childcare in our market. We studied it, we changed the process, and we achieved progress. A second side of childcare is that Dubuque Initiative successfully applied for funding from the state of Iowa in the amount of $560,000, requiring a $280,000 match. Originally, it was going to be a dollar-for-dollar match, but the strength of the application submitted by DI was so powerful that the city doubled the match to the $560,000. Those funds will assist every licensed childcare provider in Dubuque County by bumping up the starting wage for employees, because one of the greatest challenges for childcare providers is childcare workers. And if we can just increase the number of people who are providing that valuable service to our community and our families and our children, we can increase capacity overall. We believe that we can raise that fund to well over $1 million, and we believe that it's something that can be sustained year after year to make sure that in Dubuque County, you have quality, affordable, world-class childcare, which will be a critical component to recruiting workforce in our community. A community of colleges, we sponsored events throughout the year to try to ingratiate our community to these students at Clark, Loris, University of Dubuque, UWP, EMEA, and on and on. We do not have a regions institution here, but we have something nearly as great, and if we just focus on those students, we can achieve greatness. I'd like to thank the mayor for his letter, a personal letter sent out to every family of every student here in Dubuque County to welcome them to our community, wanting to ingratiate this community to them from day one. I'd like to thank the city, the city manager, the mayor and council for providing dual-service transportation to every college student in Dubuque, to get them off the campus, to get them into our neighborhoods, to get them to shop and enjoy this community, enjoy all the natural amenities that we have off-campus so that upon graduation, they seriously consider this community for their next home and their first job. We also wanted to understand what's going on in our community from the standpoint of the new generation of labor. We did the Next Gen Perception Survey, just completed it December 15th. It went out, we received responses from over 2,100 Dubuques, most of which are under the age of 40, and asked them, "What are the factors in considering Dubuque as a place to live and work?" Now, what we'll be doing with the city is going over this in detail, we'll be breaking down the data so that the mayor and council can understand what the priorities of the potential workforce are, to work with you and the private sector to make sure that we, Greater Dubuque Development Region, are communities of choice. What are the top four things identified by these folks? It's not worldly gigs and funny things or faddish things, it's concrete things, things that are essential to life and enjoyment and health. Number one, access to healthcare. Number two, affordable homeownership. Three, low crime rates. Four, great schools and education. Affordable quality rental housing. Access to affordable childcare. We understand these problems because we study them. This report is just acknowledging that we're taking the right direction. We also asked, "What are the, what quality of life amenities do you want to see in your community so this can be a community of choice for you?" The top five are a variety of restaurants, ethnic restaurants in particular, natural features, wildlife, landscape, et cetera, farmers' markets, love them, shopping, commercial districts, and hiking and biking trails. These are priorities. It also told us where they thought Dubuque landed in asking what those priorities are. They also shared where other communities landed in relationship with these priorities. And we'll be providing more information to the city manager and staff and the mayor and council as we move forward. But just as this was a year of achievement, it has also been a year, I'm sad to say, of discontent. In April of 2023, a letter was sent out to the mayor and council, the city manager, expressing concerns about several projects that had failed to progress in the Dubuque market. What resulted from that, in my view, was a solicitation of grievances. I would relate it this way. Think about your best friend, a lifelong friend, but instead of talking about all the things that made your relationship with that friend rich, all the things that went right for decades, you only thought about the times it didn't go well. Somebody said something in anger. Somebody didn't show up for a wedding. Somebody made a mistake, and you put that on a plate, and you said, "Judge that friendship" based on those grievances. Solicitation of grievance is damaging. It needs to be acknowledged, we need to understand it, but we can't allow it to be blown out of proportion. Anything that's going on in Dubuque that needs to be fixed, we can fix. I think for those collectors of grievance, the notion is Dubuque is broken, and only we can fix it. Dubuque is not broken, and together we can make it greater and greater as time goes on, not just in 2024, but for decades to come. Greater Dubuque Development, addressing the concerns expressed by community leaders who had collected these grievances, put together three roundtables in cooperation with the city manager and staff, invited anywhere from 60 to 80 business leaders to come and join with us to talk about their concerns. The first was in regard to design review teams, the second was in regard to the city's policies on leases and the sale of city property. And these meetings were very successful, but a common theme that kept coming up that wasn't part of the topic was the culture, the culture, the culture. And really, that was more personal than it was economic development. And I think it was a dangerous trail to go down, and so we focused on making change that made a difference to development in Dubuque. And the city has done that. In all three of these cases, there is conversation and progress, changing process for progress. My board of directors, I have the pleasure of serving 46 members of board of directors of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, said, "Rick, why is it that we didn't know that there are so many businesses that are angry? Why haven't you asked the right questions? Why didn't you get this information? After all, you sit down with anywhere from 250 to 300 businesses face-to-face every year, ask the same questions of each, put the database into a contact manager software, we can merge all that information, understand what's going on in any given day. Why didn't you know this?" And so, I didn't have an answer. It did surprise me, and so we changed our process. Beginning in August, we asked the question, "We want you to rank governments' ease of doing business from 1 to 7." We have asked this so far of 44 Dubuque businesses. We asked their analysis of their relationship with city government, county government, state government, and federal government as it relates to ease of doing business. The 44 folks, the average score for the city of Dubuque today, since August of this year, is 4.46 on a scale from 1 to 7. The county was 4.98. State government was 4.53. Sorry, federal government, it was 3.79. Economic development isn't broken in Dubuque. It's strong. I have the pleasure of standing on the shoulders of great people that started Greater Dubuque Development Corporation 40 years ago, a Big Ten organization where everyone had a voice and no one had control, and it came out of a time of discontent. It came out of a time where people were looking for grievances instead of solutions. And I hope to God we honor those people that started this organization and all the leaders that have served their sense, and all the people that have put their treasure into it to make it work, to get all the things that we just described tonight as the achievements of this organization, not just in the last three months, but the last 12 months and for decades to come. I want to thank the mayor and council for your support, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you, Rick. We'll open it up for questions and discussion. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Well, thank you for all those thoughts. It gave us a lot to chew on, and it just reminds me of the powerful partner we have at Greater Dubuque Development Corporation and other partners that you have mentioned there, Dubuque Initiatives and many of our private businesses. If anything, I think you undersold the benefit that Dubuque Development Corporation has meant to our community. So I know that's maybe it's best, that's how, to handle that. I used to be a very modest person until I was at Clark, and then Clark says, "No, you need to be something special so that people, you bring people to Clark." So I had to change the way I talked with people. And I don't know if you've gotten that speech from the nuns yet, but maybe, I think you could talk about a lot more of the positive effect that you've had, and you've alluded to some, and I appreciate you bringing up the difficult times as well. So over those times, the last 40 years or so, could you maybe talk about the three biggest impacts you might have had on our community? And sorry to launch this on you right now.
No, that's fine. Well, first of all, Sister Catherine Dunn hired me as the chair of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, so yes, I've had the conversation from nuns. And interestingly, it was a co-captains on the hire. It was Sister Catherine Dunn, who was who is currently the chair, and the incoming chair was Butch Fuller, another champion for our community. And when they hired me, they said they wanted change. They said they wanted Dubuque, Dubuque and the Greater Dubuque area, not just Dubuque City, to be great, to represent the name of the organization. They wanted us to go beyond chasing smokestacks. They wanted us to address the issues that make great communities. They wanted to start pay attent, wanted us to start paying attention to the treasure we have about with higher education. They wanted us to end the friction between government, city, county, state, federal, and the private sector. They wanted to, wanted us to get off our duffs and go raise some money so we could achieve some things. Because when I started at Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, the annual budget was $180,000, and they were waiting for the phone to ring. And today, thanks to private sector investment and public sector investment, we have a budget of 2.5 million, and the best economic development staff in the country. And we are a model for others, but it's difficult, perhaps impossible, to be a prophet in your own land. And so as a result, our motto is accept blame and delegate credit. And that's how we do it. And the achievements are focusing on soft infrastructure, just as we focus on, on hard infrastructure, and making this a community of choice. Main Street, Port of Dubuque, Millwork District, Dubuque Industrial Center West, Dubuque Industrial Center South, the Technology Park, the Southwest Arterial, the growth in population, the growth in employment, the growth in wages, now the growth in housing, now the growth in amenities like childcare and other amenities that make this a community of choice. That is what the board of directors of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation does, that's what investors in Greater Dubuque Corporation intend to happen, and I hope to goodness that it has. I forgot to mention too, at Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, we celebrate all holidays. I wish you all a Merry Christmas. I wish you all a Happy Bodhi Day, the Enlightenment of Buddha. I wish you a happy Hanukkah, and I hope that you can celebrate with all our friends Kwanzaa. Glad to answer any other questions.
Any others? Well, Rick, as always, you, you, you gave us a lot to work with here, so thank you very much for your presentation and for coming here multiple times a year to be able to, to share with us, and for, of course, for your service and the service of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation to the community. Thank you aptly identified the challenges we have before us, along with the successes that we have to celebrate at the end of this year. And I for one look forward to beginning of the next year and continuing these conversations, both the difficult ones and the ones that are exciting for us to have. I think there's a lot that we have to accomplish together and already have accomplished, and I appreciate you sharing the thoughts from the, the perspective of the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, and look forward to many more conversations ahead. So, thank you. Well, we have a motion here to receive and file and hear that presentation, so Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number two is Water and Resource Recovery Center Odor Abatement Efforts Update.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rousell?
I move to receive and file and listen to the presentation.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion, Ms. Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, coming to you, or?
Actually, Darren Mearing, who's the Water and Resource Recovery Center Director, is going to make a presentation.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff. Darren Mearing, Director of Water Resource Recovery Center. Going to here and give you an update on the odor reduction analysis that we've been working on at the, we, Water Research Recovery Center. Just what discussion tonight, kind of some background, talk about the recent extraordinary odor issues, and then just give an update on where we are with the odor reduction strategy, kind of the more long-term analysis of, of reducing odors at the wastewater treatment facility. So one of the first things I just want to touch on is, you know, our top priority at the Water Research Recovery Center is, is to serve the city by treating its wastewater, you know, in accordance with the Federal Clean Water Act, but we think about why is this important, or why is what we do so important? I mean, we're really, we're kind of the foundation, or one of the, one of the foundations of our, our entire community. Without what we, without the facility, you know, our city would have a hard time existing of, of joining together and, and in one place and celebrating the city of Dubuque and the masterpiece in the Mississippi. But as a foundation, if, if the way we go about our, our work and the manner in which we do it, if it, if it makes it so people can't enjoy their backyard, can't go outside or can't enjoy our community, then, then we're failing. And so, we, we need to do better, and, and we will do better, and, and we're working, working towards that now. So just again, some background, we, we use a multi-approach of treating wastewater, physical, biological, chemical processes. Terms of odor, you know, every phase of, of the collection system to pumping stations to the treatment system itself, those odors can change as, as that wastewater works through the process. And the nature of the odors are also a function of the, of the wastewater characteristics that we receive. And also because Dubuque does have a higher concentration of organic pollutants than typical domestic waste, it does have a higher propensity to produce odor, so, meaning just the wastewater that we collect at our facility, if you compare it to other communities of our size, it just has a higher concentration of, of these, these waste products. So, you know, all odor emissions are considered objectionable, but there are some treatment processes that do release larger odor volumes and more objective odors than others. And generally, the three characteristics or conditions to create odorous emission, first is just obviously having the odorous compounds and the source of the wastewater. The second is the surface area from which compounds can be emitted, so if, if it's exposed to the atmosphere, that, that's how it can be originated. And then, of course, the driving force such as just prevailing winds can, can take that odor and spread it around. So, getting on to the extraordinary, extraordinary odors that we've been experiencing since about mid-November for about a month now. So this started out, basically at a routine maintenance, so we have equipment that helps serve our anaerobic digesters, and it's, it was due for some annual inspection. So because it was going to be taken out of service for a short period of time, we also scheduled some maintenance for our staff to do right before the annual inspection. When the annual inspection occurred, we had hired a, a private contractor to come in, and they have to kind of deconstruct a little bit or take apart this unit to actually gain access to the interior so they can make a full inspection. And so, they unwired and took apart, allowed for the inspection, then they went and put it back, rewired it, and then we had a little bit left to work, a few hours to work on our, or maybe the next day to work on our, finish up what we were doing in terms of maintenance. So, but when we started up the equipment, it started up for a little bit, and then it failed, and then we couldn't get it started again. So the original contractor came back to the site, and they could not find out what was wrong with it, and they started saying that it was something to do with our control, electrical control systems, and it wasn't, you know, the equipment itself. And so that left our staff to kind of work through the issue, try to troubleshoot it, look at the control system that actually tells the, the equipment what to do. And through that process, we were able to determine that the contractor had actually rewired it wrong when they put it back into service. And so that, that, that week to ten days that took place then, all, all that time, the anaerobic digesters were getting out of, out of their normal operating procedures, and with each day, they were getting farther and farther away. And so the impact of the digesters is that there's a, there's a balance, it's a bi, it's a biological process, and there's, you know, it has to function in a certain way, there has to be a certain alkalinity, a certain, certain population of, of one microorganism species versus another one, and they all kind of, kind of play their part. And when this was happening, they get all out of their normal ecosystem, and that throws it off, and so that, what that hap, what happened then is our, we have four digesters, and so two of them, kind of what we'd say went dormant, they really weren't, there wasn't, wasn't much activity going on. So we had to kind of mitigate that activity and make sure that the, the digesters that were functioning, that they continued to function, so again, that we could treat and, and stay in compliance with the Federal Clean Water Act and not essentially pollute, pollute the river. And so what that forces us to do is to start storing wastewater in tanks that we don't normally store wastewater, and of course, that opens that up to the atmosphere, and number two, there's, as I mentioned, that's really what happened. The exposed surface area was larger than we've had in the past, and so the, so more, more of these odors were, have been emitted, so. So what we've been doing, actions to date, were, first of all, reviving the anaerobic digesters is number one. So the first thing that we did is we, again, diverted some of the waste from those anaerobic digesters to make sure that we didn't further damage or make them perform even worse. At least they can handle the flow that we were getting, and we could remain compliant with the, our permit. And then the other thing we're doing is we're trying to then nurse these other, other two digesters back to health, and so things we've done to do that is introducing sludge from the healthy digesters to try to slowly introduce those back into the system. We've also taken loads of anaerobic digester sludge, seed sludge from Iowa City, so we've had it trucked here to, again, to try to reinvigorate and, and populate those, those microorganisms within the, within the digesters. And then we've also been adjusting alkalinity to make sure that the acids don't get out of hand, because those are, they can kill off the, the method, the methane-producing bacteria. We've also mentioned exploring legal remedies, just started to look into that a little bit related to the, the actions of the maintenance contractor. And then finally, we're also examining steps and, you know, to look at how can we prevent something like this from happening again. So for example, if this is done in the summer ideally, you know, if it's ninety degrees outside, this equipment really isn't even needed. And so, if this would have happened in July, for, you know, we probably wouldn't be standing here talking about this extraordinary odor issue, so there are definitely things that we can do better on our end. And we've also been stocking spare parts, just again, to make sure that if something does happen, we can quickly exchange faulty pieces and get that equipment up, back and running as fast as possible. So just in terms of the milestones of, of getting these extraordinary odors eliminated, so we just started hauling in or received the, the last few loads from the Iowa City last week, so we're going to be assessing this week, how did that affect the, the health of these digesters? If healthy enough, we would start to slowly introduce more and more waste to these digesters, monitor that closely to make sure that it's, you know, the, the microorganisms are accepting it and handling it well. And then if that all goes well, we would return to normal treatment operations in sometime in January, next month, which means that we would again be able to handle wastewater the way we did before this whole instant, instance. Now, that doesn't solve the, the issue because we still have to feed the material that we have stored temporarily, we got to feed that back into the system, and again, that we kind of have to monitor and slowly feed it back in. Well, slow, I say slowly, it's really a function of how fast and how well the system can handle it. It's going to depend on the recovery and, and the waste removal. And the cleaning tanks, you know, will have most of the solids or, or most of the material removed from those tanks, but full cleaning, you know, depending on weather, might, you know, take February or March. If it's, if it's ten below zero in February, we're not going to be able to clean the, the tanks, but, so that's kind of where we're at. And then, so I guess at this point, if, maybe take some questions on, on this aspect of the presentation, if it pleases the council, otherwise I can go into the more long-term.
Why don't we, why don't you keep on going, Darren? Let's, let's get through, let's get through the whole presentation, and that way it kind of gives us the full context, and then we can ask some questions.
Sure.
Thank you.
So just in terms of the longer-term odor reduction analysis, so again, as, as wastewater decomposes, it produces gas and compounds that have unpleasant odors, the, the primary culprit is hydrogen sulfide, that's generally the prevalent odor causing most odors, and so the strategy really is to try and find out where, where that hydrogen sulfide or H2S is in the system, so that we can try to reduce it and prevent that from being emanated or, or released. So again, the, the process that we undergo for that, that we, we started, and started this summer, is again, identify where the most H2S is, hydrogen sulfide is in the system, and then we identify, it's also a function of how, where we actually can dose it, because you have to have a certain time that that chemical is in contact with the actual wastewater to be effective, so that's also part of the evaluation. So it's, it's a combination of where in the system makes the most sense to, to effectively reduce hydrogen sulfide, but also then at what concentrations are, make meaningful impacts. And then, of course, determine the costs and provide permanent odor reduction measures. So, like, in the summer, we hired US Proxider or USP to help identify where these are, and they set up systems and, and, and measure the corresponding, they can also measure the corresponding reduction in hydrogen sulfide, so that's how we can under, we can dictate or predict or understand where we're actually making progress in terms of H2S reduction. So what we've determined to date is that if we add between fifty and sixty gallons of hydrogen peroxide per day to the waste stream, kind of before the primary clarifier system, we, we achieved a fifty percent reduction in H2S, and that costs, you know, between one hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty thousand per year to, for us to continue that per, on a permanent basis, and we will be making a recommendation to do that as part of the FY25 budget recommendation. And, and one of the things I, I should mention too on these is that when, when we're looking at the optimal amount of what concentrations make sense, it's not like we're looking to save money per se, it's just that at some point, adding more chemical doesn't really provide any benefit, so it's more of a just understanding, what is that breakpoint in terms of how much chemical we add? So it's not just, if we added more hydrogen peroxide, we'd be able to knock fifty percent down to forty, or sixty percent or eighty percent. It's really a function of, of the system. So the next steps coming up is we evaluating dosing the system in another, couple other locations. One of those would be before waste, or, or before it goes into the centrifuge where it's de-watered, where, where solids are de-watered. And that'll take about four to six weeks to actually do the study. Again, that's to figure out what the optimal dose is, or the diminished, or the, determine when the diminishing margin utility is. So even though it's going to take four to six, four, six weeks to figure out what the best approach is going to be, you know, odor reductions will happen right away because we'll be entering into the system, it's just a matter of figuring out what's the best dose. And then the second place is before the, before the waste goes into the anaerobic digesters in another location, and that one is going to take a little longer because there's like a forty-day residence time in the digesters, you have to take that into full account, and so it might take eight to fourteen weeks to find that optimal dosing concentration. But again, reduction, odor reduction measures could be realized right away. But in addition to reducing H2S, we're also looking at compounds like iron salts as part of that process, because they can also be used for that function, but they can have secondary benefits of, of reducing struvite from the system. So next steps, again, determine those optimum combination of dosing rates and the additives, determine the cost to come up with some recommended improvements, and then, and then the last bullet here is important, you know, our work won't be done just because we've finished this analysis, then we'll have to reassess, because the, we can measure how much sulfur or H2S is removed from the system, but we still then to have to go back and assess, is that enough, and do we have to do more? So that's what the last bullet is indicating there. And we will be providing periodic updates on both the, kind of the short- And we will be providing periodic updates on both the, kind of the short-term extraordinary order conditions and also the long-term analysis on the website that's shown here. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Questions, discussion? Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you for your presentation and a lot of, I like the next steps. I like a lot of what you're talking about. I want to bring up a few things that the citizen mentioned. And one thing he mentioned or suggested that we have an expert that would come in and perhaps offer an opinion on the solution. When you say we're going to do the study, do we have outside folks come in here? Is this internal or what is that?
Yes, we have hired this USP Technologies. That's, that's really what they do. They, they bring in temporary setups so that you can dose at various locations and then they can actually measure the reduction in hydrogen sulfide. So that's, that's why they were hired because that's kind of what they do.
Great. And he also talked about, and it makes sense that if we have high-strength waste, does that add to the problem? Or what is the effect of high-strength waste on this issue?
So, well, part of the issue is if we have to reduce the, the, how much we actually introduce to the digesters, well, the high-strength waste is harder to deal with because it just puts more of a burden on the digesters. Normally, they don't put a burden on the digesters. The digesters work fine receiving the high-strength waste, but under this condition, the high-strength waste would be, would be, provide too much. It's kind of one way to think of it, it's like a sugar high for the digesters. There's a lot of good eats in the high-strength waste and, but if they eat it really fast and they create too much acid, which then can kill off other parts of the bacteria. So, so I guess they don't necessarily contribute to the problem, although it's the fact that we can't necessarily treat them the way we would normally do that's, that's creating some of the odors, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that, please?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. So the city has already budgeted for, and we plan to implement a system where the high-strength waste is actually delivered by semi-tractor trailer. It's not, doesn't come through the normal sewer system. And so what we've budgeted for is where they can be put in storage containers and then we can inject it into the system in a measured fashion. Where the way it happens now is when the truck comes, it gets put into the system. And so, and the, we plan on meeting with the businesses that bring us the high-strength waste to talk to them about the cost of that process and what that would do to their fees. The other thing is, I've heard reference, not tonight, by the way, not from the speaker, that the city expects, accepts high-strength waste from industries because it's, it's a cash cow for us. We accept high-strength waste from industries because it's a service they need operate their facilities and we want to provide that service so they can be profitable here and continue to employ people. Yes, do we take some high-strength waste from businesses that are not within the city limits? So there's a biodiesel plant in Farley. They bring us their high-strength waste. And John Deere brings us some, very little, but some. I don't know, is there another one that's from out of town?
Not that I know of.
So they're, so they're both local in Dubuque County. But even if they weren't, we didn't accept their waste, their waste is, their high-strength waste is a very tiny component of the total high-strength waste that we accept, mostly from businesses within the city limits of Dubuque.
Thank you. And just one more question, Mr. Mayor. And, and first of all, I appreciate in your introductory that you, you recognize that this is an issue and that it's important. And you're doing everything. I mean, you're brand new in this position and here we go. And you're, you're addressing it straight up, so I appreciate that. The impact, you said that the impact to the contractor for this error is we are exploring legal remedies. Is there any way that we can be proactive and, and put in the contract? Since this is an annual inspection, if they change, you know, that they need to guarantee it's going to be, before they leave, obviously when they leave, what, you know, they left you with a problem, it's huge. You know, maybe, and, you know, this is not some brilliant idea, but is that possible? Is there such a thing that people don't leave until it's made right? And, and then, and then their contract is fulfilled, then you'll, then you'll write them the check? But just to, to run off when this is not working is not acceptable? I, just a question.
Yeah, I mean, we are looking into the agreement because of this and, and I know that there's, there are things we can probably do better in, in the contract and we can definitely explore what you're suggesting in subsequent contracts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel, go ahead.
So one question brought up by our speaker that I think does apply and I'm curious about. Is there a redundancy that you're aware of that other communities have in place in order to avoid this situation we're in presently?
Well, I'm not familiar with other, you know, facilities. I do know that we have other, for example, micro turbines would also provide some of this function. And that's really what provides the function in the summertime. So this equipment's only really needed in the wintertime. So we kind of have a little redundancy there with, with the micro turbines, but it, it can't function at the same level as this equipment. So, and that's why we were looking at making sure we have spare parts. And it's not an overly complicated piece of equipment. It's, it was installed as part of the, the last upgrade. So it's fairly young. It doesn't have many hours on it. So, but that's something we definitely can consider going forward. That's what we'll have, we'll definitely have to consider that going forward.
And I have more to say, but I think I'll allow others to ask questions.
Other questions? Nothing on this side of the table. Ms. Farber, did you have anything?
Yes, I did. Thank you. And again, I hope you could hear me.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Darren, thank you for the presentation and I also wanted to thank Brad and also Jim Clower who have shared with us the significant inconvenience and the intangibles there of the odors that the residents of the south and there are receiving on a daily basis. And I agree that these odorous compounds really are impacting what I would consider our public safety and also meaning the clean air and the pollutants that he talked about because I have been in those areas and also have had the same reaction that they have as well. But I would like some clarification on the hydrogen sulfide and the mercaptans that you talked about in your memo. And if we need to, at this point, increase the funding immediately to help better control or at least try to work with the hydrogen peroxide and the iron salts that might be needed to help immediately alleviate some of this odor? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So as part of the, you know, I mentioned that increasing the order or the funding as an FY25 budget recommendation, but we can look at available funding, you know, because again, what we're doing is we're going to figure out what makes sense for reducing hydrogen sulfide. And so then it's just a matter of, okay, how much money would we need to finish out the year to continue that practice? So it, it might not be, you know, if we finish this study and analysis in, in February or March, we're only talking, you know, a quarter of the year. So we might be able to look at using existing funds to continue that practice or we can evaluate moving other funds into this cost center, I guess.
So my question is, do we have to wait until March or is your recommendation to wait until March to do this? Is it not, I see it as extremely imperative that we start to work on this as we are speaking.
Sure. So the study itself will be introducing the chemicals and so we will have the odor reduction improvements almost immediately. The, the study takes a while to figure out, okay, what's the optimum dosage and location? So there's just a little bit of time there to figure out what the recommendation is going forward. But we can continue to introduce and dose the waste streams from now until the new year, if that's what you're asking. We can continue to do that. And we'd have to work and see how much, at the end of the day, when we kind of complete the study, how much chemicals is that and what's that budget going to be and can we actually do that? I would think that would be our, our goal to do that. Like I said, it's only going to be a three-month period when we'll know for sure and have to start buying the chemicals continually to, to keep up what we've, what we've learned and, and address the, the benefits that we realize or discovered.
Right. So I would, I would potentially call this and just tell me what you think about having it as a phase one where the dosage is on an ongoing basis until that March timeframe. In other words, to try to get resolution to get the odor abated as quickly as possible and on an ongoing level of abatement and lowering each level of abatement hopefully between now and that March timeframe so that there is activity here by the city to try to get this reduced. Is that possible?
Yes. And it was our goal to start the second phase here in January. So again, so we would start those odor reduction efforts in January. And so there would be some realized, like you're saying, right away.
So some here, any December, January, February, March, there would be ongoing efforts here. I just wanted to make sure that it's.
Yes, yes, sorry. Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you, Darren.
Is that all Ms. Farber?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Darren, I have a couple of questions. Ms. Wethel wanted to have a few more words to say, but I do have a few questions. Can, can you clarify for me exactly when this snafu occurred? I'm, I'm a little unclear on that in the, with the issue with the, this contractor who came in and didn't rewire.
It was at the beginning of November.
Okay. So, so in the beginning of November, this occurred. Okay, so we're very, pretty recently here. But part of, part of the frustration that I'm hearing from, from residents and I'm feeling up here too, is that this just seems like it has taken so long. What, what is it that, you know, we started this process in June of looking with the, the chemicals that we could work with to try to mitigate the odor? Had some work done on that from June through August for, to look at it, right? In August began the process of putting those chemicals into the system to be able to mitigate the odor. Did we start to see some progress between August and November that was measurable, that we could, not so much with the nose, because I know that that's harder to measure, but I mean measurable by the tools we were using?
Yes.
Okay. So we had some measurable progress that was there. You said, in your presentation, you said a reduction of?
50%.
50% in that timeframe.
Yep.
So we were seeing some really good progress until this all occurred and really set us back. Is, is that an accurate statement?
Well, I wouldn't say it set us back. It's just, you would not be able to tell we made any progress because the new odors are kind of.
Far and away worse than.
Yeah.
Than what you're experiencing before.
Yeah.
So really, we have two separate problems here. We have the, we have the issue that we've been dealing with for a long time on the long term. And then we have this issue that occurred just very recently at the beginning of November.
Correct.
So what I'm hearing you say, and you tell me if I'm wrong about any of this, is that the beginning of November issue, you're working on correcting that, but it has to, there's a process that it has to take some time to get through. Because you can't just eliminate that odor immediately. You have to take that and put it back into the system and you have to do it slowly and then you have to clean the tanks and we have to deal with the weather and all these different things. So that issue is one that's being dealt with between now and March is what your hope is.
Correct.
Okay. So then the other issue is working toward, what I, what I heard you say, optimum combination of dosing rates and additives to figure out exactly what that's going to be. Mike threw in storing high-strength waste differently potentially and also inputting it differently, which could be potentially helpful in this process, but also is going to take some time. Is there anything else we can do that's immediate? I mean, I just feel like I have to ask that question. I think I know the answer and I don't like the answer, but I just want to know, is there anything else we can do to mitigate this now in a way that is going to be helpful and measurably so to, to residents themselves?
I mean, there, there isn't, isn't much we can do. We have to wait until, unfortunately, wait till the digesters are back at full strength or nearing full strength and we can start introducing that. So we've, yeah, we've unfortunately, we're.
Okay. I, I did leave out one other step that I heard you say we're doing, and that's fixing the process that you take as a staff so this doesn't occur again.
Right.
Which I think we all recognize and agree is extremely important in this.
Yes.
Because this, it's, the term unfortunate just doesn't even cover it, you know, where, where we're at with this.
Yeah.
The fact that this happened at this time after we're already dealing with all these issues.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think that, I, I don't think that Mr. Plummer, anybody else is overstating the, the nature of the impact of this on their lives. So, okay. Thank you, Darren. Ms. Wethel, back to you.
So during goal-setting, we had conversations related to odor mitigation that I felt were robust conversations that made us all aware of what we needed to do. And know that it was not a top priority, but it did lend discussion that I felt was productive. I, I think we seriously though, need to take that to the next level when it comes to looking into our budgetary needs, not just to fix the short-term and long-term problem, but fix redundancy in the system to provide coverage so that if and when some sort of a catastrophic issue, and I will call it catastrophic, happens again, that we have a backup option for management. I, I feel that it's appropriate and we're spending a lot of time talking about how this affects our residents, specifically in my ward, in Ward Four. And I take it incredibly seriously. I'm, I'm very troubled by it. I've been asked to leave my house at certain times of the night and go drive in the neighborhood by someone's house and I have. And it's disgusting. It, it makes my stomach turn. There is absolute legitimate concerns and I validate all of them. I also want to say that this has to do with the mines of Spain. Murphy Park, where we have our light displays this time of the year. It's tragic that it's happening of all these times. And Darren, I know this is not of a fault of anyone in our city, but it, it is something that of all the times of the year, it truly is a devastating situation. It's now affecting downtown at times. And so we heard from Greater Dubuque Development tonight that with the Next Gen Survey, there was value placed by those responding, number two, natural features. And so as a council, as we move forward to discuss where we are going to put our budgetary measures, I think these kind of outcomes are where we need to focus. And I think what I'm saying is, I want to prioritize you and I want to hear from you what you need and I want the real story. I know it's going to be a lot of money. I want the real story though. And so I think we all need to have a preparation in mind moving into budget season of what this will look like. A couple of questions that I would ask just for follow-up. One is that knowing that we're moving into a potential discussion with high-strength waste diversion and storage, I would like to know a month from now, what those discussions involve? I'd like to know, since we're going through these processes and we'll be to a stage two in January, if we could receive an update on what that stage is allowing us to do and what our results are? I personally would appreciate an update to council. And if there is a, a desire or thirst for that from my colleagues, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I personally don't think, one, one second, Ms. Farber. I don't think the second meeting in January is too long to, is, that's a realistic timeframe for an update because it's kind of one of the next phases, right? Would you, would you all agree with that?
Sure.
Okay. So the second meeting in January, which is the, the second regularly scheduled meeting would be a good place to put that. Ms. Farber, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to make a recommendation or if we could get feedback from Mike, that indeed the funding will be available to work and have the hydrogen peroxide and the iron salts immediately injected into the system so that we have something to monitor and for Darren to report back in January in order to see if we can get the odorous compounds decent, so the airflow is decent. decent, so the airflow is decent, so people can walk and be outdoors in their houses in that area.
If I'm understanding correctly, Darren, you, you said we are doing that. That the process of studying what to do with the hydrogen peroxide and the iron salts is in process, and that process has to take certain steps, which you will be taking between now and the next time you come to us for an update. Is that correct?
So just to clarify, the next step in the process is to add the chemicals into the two other waste streams. That's, will start in January. So we're not currently doing it, but it's planned. We're owed the proposal to hire them to do the next phase, but that's our, that's what we're going to be doing, so.
Thank you for that clarification. Does that answer your question, Ms. Farber?
It does. So that means that we're still kind of status quo as we are today until January. No change until January.
There won't be any noticeable difference between now and January, probably. Yeah.
Yeah, there is-
I'm sorry, there'll be no difference?
No.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Sprank, and then we'll move on here.
And Darren, I think basically if you put all these chemicals in, you're going to kill the whole process, and it would stop our digesters from doing their things. That's why it has to wait till January, correct? If you put too much chemicals in, you're going to totally ruin the chemical, the balance of whatever you need, of, of microorganisms that eat all the waste. And if you put too much of these chemicals in, you'll just stop the process, and then we'll have to start all over, and that would take much longer, correct?
Yeah, the, so the reason, just to clarify, and I think what you're saying is correct. The, the reason we, we have to slow down the, the actual waste introduction into the system, that's part of the issue. The actual chemicals and cells, I guess you could dose them at a certain extent where something like that could happen, and that's why we have to make sure we're careful about how much we put in there and figure out what dosing is acceptable and effective.
All right. Well, I think it's been a good conversation, and Darren, appreciate you coming here. You're in a new role. You're brand-new to this role. You're not brand-new to the city or the processes that you're speaking about, so we appreciate that. But we do appreciate you coming to report on this for us. I think what I'm hearing here is that there is, there is a general agreement that the odors that emanate from our Water and Resource Recovery Center cannot impact the quality of life of our residents. That needs to be our standard operating procedure. And what I hear from you is that we are shooting in that direction. We have not reached it. We have struggled to get there, and have, there has been a major problem with that. So we are failing in this regard, but we need to continue to improve, and you're working towards that improvement, and I appreciate you sharing the steps with us. None of the answers you gave us tonight are exactly what we'd love to be hearing, but I think at least I for one, and I'm hearing from my council colleagues, understand that there's a process to this that we do have to follow. And unfortunately, it takes some time, but you're working on it, and you're working on it hard. So thank you very much for doing that. All right. Motion here is to receive and file here this presentation. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passed at seven zero.
Action item number three is Central Avenue, White Street Truck Route, amend commercial motor vehicles ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I moved to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Can I ask, Krena, is there another step in here as far as taking it off the table and considering it?
No. Procedurally, since it was tabled till tonight, it automatically comes back onto the agenda.
Thanks for checking on that, Mike.
As part of the construction of the Southwest Arterio by the Iowa Department of Transportation, it was agreed that the Northwest Arterio would no longer be a state highway, and that Central Avenue and White Street would no longer be a state highway. One of the benefits of this was that the downtown streets of Central Avenue and White Street no longer require designation by the State of Iowa as a truck route 24 hours a day, seven days a week. November 2016, an agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation was approved by city council, which documented this transfer of jurisdiction. Not only did this lead to the construction of the Southwest Arterio, but it was seen as an opportunity to make Central Avenue and White Street more pedestrian-friendly and create a greater opportunity for improvement and redevelopment of this corridor, and air quality would be improved. Southwest Arterio was completed in August of 2020. The creation of restrictions of trucks traveling on Central Avenue and White Streets was delayed because restrictions would increase traffic on the Northwest Arterio during the 2022 and 2023 rehabilitation and reconstruction of the Northwest Arterio by the city, which was completed in August of 2023. The city did not want to push Central Avenue traffic into a construction zone, compromising safety and creating traffic and congestion delays. In late 2022, the city completed a Central Avenue Corridor Streetscape Master Plan after a four-year process interrupted and delayed by COVID-19. The mayor and city council has made the Central Avenue Corridor a consistent priority. The city budget includes $407,117 for Central Avenue Corridor Streetscape Master Plan implementation. City budget includes $265,000 to complete a traffic study in this corridor, and on December 4th, 2023, the city council approved a request for proposals to identify a consulting firm to do this study, which is anticipated to be completed later in 2024. Also, $400,000 is budgeted to begin design implementation of this potential project that might include conversion of these one-way streets to two-way streets that could cost in excess of $12 million, depending on what is decided. In addition, the city has budgeted to reconstruct three alleys as pervious paver alleys in the Central Avenue Corridor in 2024. When the city council adopted an ordinance that allowed all trucks to continue to use Central Avenue and White Street during the Northwest Arterio reconstruction, it was clear that upon completion of the Northwest Arterio construction project, that decision would be revisited. In preparation for making this recommendation, I have conducted meetings with affected parties. This included meetings with neighborhood associations and the Central Avenue Business Owners Group, the latter conducted in July 2023. The Greater Dubuque Development Corporation also began meeting with businesses potentially impacted by truck traffic restrictions on Central Avenue and White Street. Beginning in June 2020, I began meeting with potentially impacted businesses, including trucking companies serving multiple businesses. Greater Dubuque Development Corporation arranged the meetings and also attended. City staff attended some of the meetings with me. Over the last three years, I met with John Deere Prairie Farms Dubuque stamping and manufacturing, Hodge Companies, Clower Manufacturing, Vitera, which was formerly called Gavillon Grain, Standard Forwarding Trucking, Trucker Freight Lines, some businesses I met with more than once. The Greater Dubuque Development Corporation also provided me information from separate meetings they had with Anderson Windows, Lime Rock Springs Pepsi, Paisley Trucking, and Herschbach Trucking. I failed to identify a clear path to a recommendation that would satisfy all the needs of the businesses and the expectations of the Central Avenue and White Street property owners, small business proprietors, and residents. Property owners, small business proprietors, and residents were concerned about noise, safety, and the general idea that this corridor needed to be more pedestrian-friendly to spur more pedestrian activity, growth, and investment. The business owners and trucking companies were concerned with the extra cost to drive longer distances. The extra time could cause drivers to exceed their number of hours the U.S. Department of Transportation allows them to drive per day, causing some one-day trips to become two-day trips. They are also concerned with the impact of any restrictions of businesses with multiple locations in the city limits or businesses that took deliveries from the riverfront or local warehouses. One concern expressed multiple times is that vehicles traveling in this corridor are speeding. This has been identified as one of the corridors that will have automated speed enforcement beginning in 2024. This is all compounded by the fact that Central Avenue and White Street has been a truck route for a very long time, and some businesses might have made location and expansion decisions based on the convenient route. After receiving all of this input, the ordinance being submitted has the intended impact of restricting truck traffic that does not originate in Dubuque County or have a Dubuque County destination. In 2024, the city of Dubuque will be doing a traffic study on Central Avenue and White Street. This study will provide valuable insights to how the new ordinance has influenced truck traffic patterns on Central Avenue and White Street. The findings will be instrumental in assessing the effectiveness of the current restrictions and will serve as a foundation for any potential future adjustments. It is crucial to note that any considerations for further tightening of restrictions must be mindful of the concurrent infrastructure changes. In 2025, the Iowa Department of Transportation is set to reconstruct the US-20 West Brown Bridge over Catfish Creek. This impending project is expected to bring about significant traffic disruptions necessitating careful coordination and awareness to minimize overall impact on the transportation network in the area. I respectfully recommend mayor and city council approval of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I think you've got as good an ordinance here as, as can be done to address all the opposing interests that are, that are involved and provide a compromise that works. Certainly, there's, there's no business going on if there's no trucking. If trucks can't get to your business, you're out of business, plain and simple. We have to make that work. We have to make these streets more pedestrian-friendly and small-vehicle friendly. Got a number of things working in that direction as well. And nothing that we do here is forever. If this turns out to not work in a year or whatever period of time, it can be brought back to the table for, for a better fix or for a different fix or for a tweak. I do want to just take a second to talk about the, the previous council meeting. I voted no to table the, the motion at that time. I was just disappointed that we went right to table, because once the tables, motions made to table and a second has occurred, all we can do is vote. Can't raise any issues, can't talk about it, can't do anything about it. And we had a whole roomful of affected individuals here that night, and I was just hoping to have some conversation about where we were trying to go and why we were trying to get there prior to that window closing. So I voted no. It was more symbolic and parliamentarian. It never did recommend, or never did suggest that I was not in favor of the ordinance in making this change. It's been a, we've had a couple of years to, to get used to this idea since we delayed it because of the Northwest Arterio reconstruction. I was disappointed that some of the trucking companies were complaining that they weren't involved in the process. My goodness, the city manager just listed about a dozen and a half meetings between the city, between him directly and G NDC on our behalf with these companies. That usually doesn't happen. I think you had exceptional opportunities to have input. Plus, we provided this additional two weeks between December 4th and tonight for just exactly that purpose. So keep talking to us. It's okay. Call us up, send us emails. We want to know what, what you need and what, what you're doing and what's working for you and what's not, because it helps us make good decisions. And by the way, I applaud you all for being here at that December 4th meeting. That, that was quite a visual impact as well and helped us understand how important this is to you. So I plan to vote in support of this. I plan to do it with crossed fingers, that, that things work out well in the next 12 to 24 months, but I expect that it's going to be better than it was. And sometimes you can't have perfect. We can't have perfect. That's, the city manager's point about some businesses choosing to locate where they located because of proximity to that truck route, that's a big deal. That's a big investment, and ignoring that reality is certainly not good for those companies and not being good for companies that provide the very connections that make all the businesses thrive is not good for the city of Dubuque. So we've got to make this work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, kind of to echo a little Mr. Jones, yeah, I want to thank those who've given us input, who've talked to us, who've come to the meetings. We appreciate it. Also, just, I hope this works out. I don't think, though, some, everyone totally understands there are folks that want to invest in Central Corridor, and they want to do something good, but to do that, we have to be able to do something on their buildings. They have to either to replace windows, facades, roofs. They have to be able to shut down or maybe not shut down the whole street, but half of the street. And when this was a DOT route, you couldn't do that. You had to, I tried to work with some build, building owners for my construction company, and to do that with the DOT, the DOT basically said it's a six-month to a year window just to even try to shut down the street, to try to push traffic over to one lane. So that is why some people haven't been able to do major investments in Central, because they just literally can't do any work. The alleys have too much infrastructure for wiring, or they're horrible, or there's power lines, so they're left with working off the street, and you can't do that. I'm glad that the city now has jurisdiction over Central, so we, so businesses can now start reinvesting in, in Central. So I'm hoping this all works out, and I do like the idea that if we can, if it doesn't, we can come back and look at it again in a year or two. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Ms. Russell, go ahead.
Thank you. Couple comments and a couple of questions. One, I'm really glad that we had this little extra time to reach out to the trucking companies to get their, their more, more recent input, and I got the feeling from the emails that we got that people felt that there was a good spirit of cooperation. I liked one of the trucking companies that reminded us that once this change is made, the truck routing software will help those more long-term truckers to use the appropriate channels as they're coming through our, our community to, to leave Central Avenue for the local truckers. But a couple of questions, and I, I don't, I guess this'll come to you, Mike. Number one was, how was the $50 decided for the, the fee? It doesn't seem like very much for someone who might be disobeying the ordinance. The, the second question will be, street repair plans, I wondered if they'd be part of the, the RFP for the Central Avenue. There's some people who have concerns that the remaining trucking on some of the streets that aren't quite smooth, as some of the award-winning streets that we heard about earlier may be causing some damage to some of the older buildings. And then lastly, wondered if, if there will be a, a way to set up a specific time so that we can remind ourselves to revisit how this is going in, say, a, a year or whatever it might be, just so that we have that deadline in mind so that, as Mr. Jones said, we can, we can revisit and, and see how it's going, get some of that data, see how, how our choices have played out.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take the first question, if that's all right?
Sure.
Okay. Related to the, the fine, the $50, that is not a new figure. That's what has been in the ordinance for as far back as I can recall. And when you look at the ordinance and the, the history of it, I believe it has been at least that amount since 2013. I would have to do a little bit of research to determine if it was changed in 2013 or if that was just a recodification, updating the code.
Okay. So I would just wondering if people felt that was going to be a deterrent to get what we need. So I'll just leave that there.
If you want, Mike, go ahead.
Yes, the other question. So as I put in the memo, it would take a major capital project to rebuild this corridor in excess of $12 million. So I'd be disingenuous if I were to suggest that that's on the horizon. It's not in our five-year capital improvement program budget, and until we have the study done at the end of next year, it, there's not any ability for me to put it in the budget because I don't know what the project is. So I, I think that will, that will take a while. The idea of when does it come back to you? I didn't have any intention of bringing it back, so it'll be when the council decides that you want to hear more about it. Now, there's going to be that study, and that study's going to come back to you, so you could take that as the context of talking about this at that time, but this specific ordinance and issue, I wasn't planning to bring back.
Ms. Russell, first.
Well, these were just some of the questions that I had heard from some people who do business in the area, so I wanted to kind of bring them up to see if anyone else had thoughts in that same area or, you know, sometimes- Sometimes when you hear something from someone else, it sparks an idea, you know. So I would just welcome any conversation on those topics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
It wasn't my intent to suggest a sunset on the ordinance or anything of that nature at all. Anything that we do can be looked at again if it's not working right. If it's working right, I don't think we probably do revisit it and expect it's going to work better than it is. The point that I poorly was trying to make or was poorly made is that when this traffic study comes back, we're going to know a lot more about what's happening and how it's working. And that may show us some red flags, and at that time, it may be time to say, wait a minute, we need to adjust this. For right now, I think this is the best answer that can be had. And if further tweaking is needed, that'll become apparent to the community, and they'll be telling us.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So I have changed the way I feel about this a lot in the last two weeks with all the partnerships that we have and with the outreach from Greater Dubuque and also with the Chamber and the members of the trucking community coming together and saying, we want this, we like this, this is a much better thing. So I appreciate that. My concern remains, though, with the enforcement. And I guess it's a philosophy, whether you think that if something is unenforceable, we still want to say, well, it's an ordinance, and here's what happens. And why I feel that is the response from Captain Jensen from the police department. There's a lot of difficulty in actually making this stick, you know, following people or, you know, through the city and all the different things that they have to do. One thing I liked about the new and improved ordinance from two weeks ago is that if you have a Dubuque County license plate on your vehicle, then you're okay. You can see that right away. The other thing that I think should be talked about is the Northwest Arterial. When that was made, that also helped with truck traffic on Central. I hope. It seems to be that way. And so there are many things that have happened in the last two weeks that have changed my mind quite a bit on this. But the enforcement aspect, Mr. Van Milligan, is there something that can be done to ease enforcement responsibilities or make it easier for the police to enforce this? Because, as you saw, Captain Jensen is always just right out there honest on how things are going to be, says this is going to be difficult to enforce.
Well, you're right. Chief Jeremy Jensen said that it will be a challenge to enforce. I don't... I didn't expect any other response than that. I think truck route enforcement anywhere is a challenge. And the courts don't allow just random stopping just to see where a truck is going back and forth. It's either part of another violation or it's an... You have some presumption that the truck is in violation. For example, if a truck was pulling a Home Depot trailer, you'd say, well, okay, there's no Home Depots in Dubuque. So you might think... So there's some presumption that, you know, what are you doing on Central and White? But yeah, it's going to be a challenge. There's just no doubt about it.
Thank you. And I appreciate the historical aspect of it. I mean, many citizens of Dubuque know that if you live near a hospital, you're going to have sirens. You know, if you live near schools, there's going to be school buses. And if you live on Garfield, you're going to have trains. And for a long time, if you live on Central, there are going to be trucks. I appreciate the effort to limit that amount of problems to the community. But they've been rumbling through there for 100 years, and we still have a lot of buildings that are doing well. And I hope that we can continue to improve Central Corridor. But I'm glad that we need to... I mean, I'm glad that we are addressing the importance of this issue. Let's slow the trucks down. As the Chief Jensen said, you know, they're pretty good neighbors, actually. You don't see a lot of speeding in these areas, and they don't honk their horns unless it's an emergency. So I think the truckers coming through are doing the best they can. They know... They see it's a neighborhood right there. And I think they're, for the most part, you know, really conscientious drivers. So thank you, Mr. Van Milligan, and all the partners for these changes that have been made that I think are critical. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. Farber, go ahead.
Thank you. And I'd like to just also, similar to Mr. Resnick, thank the community of trucking and business community, business leaders here for taking the time to reach out and to communicate with Mike. And especially, I understand there was a most recent meeting with the Chamber of Commerce where they could have additional comment within the last two weeks to help solidify the ordinance. So that is greatly appreciated, and I think it's a great example of the partnership that we are beginning to see more and more of with a collaborative input from the community. And I also had the question about, you know, the enforcement, so thank you very much for that thought. I do have a question about rerouting some of this traffic to Highway 20. And I was wondering, Mike, if you could just give us a little bit more information about what you think will be happening at that point in time and if it's going to be highly congested or not during the time that there is some changes by the DOT.
Well, there's no doubt that there will be additional congestion in 2025. The Iowa Department of Transportation is going to replace the westbound bridge over Catfish Creek out there by Finn and Ford, and that's a year-long project, which means for that stretch of Highway 20, traffic is going to be funneled into the two lanes instead of four lanes. So 2025 is going to be very challenging. There's no doubt about that.
Is there something that we need to advertise or do we need to share the information about this happening so that people are and the truckers are more aware of the routing to see if there can be something to alleviate the stress?
Oh, there definitely will be plenty of notification. And remember, by then, we'll have our electronic signage system installed, so we'll be able to, in real time, notify vehicles of if there's an accident or just this congestion and, you know, maybe take the Southwest Arterial to 61151 and avoid Highway 20 to get to the Illinois Bridge. And there'll be other options, too.
Great, because I think that will be helpful for everyone to know that. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel.
I'll try and not duplicate. My council colleagues pretty much made all the comments that I was going to make, but I just had a couple of other things to add. I received a great deal of information from industry leaders and additionally, a number of great questions that I have posed to city staff. And so I wanted to go through some of the... Just summarize some of that. We mentioned different things the city is going to do in the future. And I just want to say, related to concerns of speeding on Central and White, we are going to bring forward automated speed enforcement. My hope is that that will modify behavior related to speeding in those areas. I hope my hypothesis is correct on that. Trucking professionals, again, Ms. Russell had mentioned, I believe, that the software... Although enforcement will be difficult, the goal is that software, my understanding is, will be adapted so that those truck routes are changed automatically. And that, to me, although it's difficult to enforce, that's a process change that will change the behavior automatically in the future. And so, yes, the enforcement's difficult, and I had a concern with that as well, Mr. Resnick. But I'm hopeful that that automated system will prove that we can make progress. It was estimated... My question was, how much will this reduce? How much through traffic of trucks do we actually have? And so a recent traffic count showed that we had, on one day, 282 trucks in 24 hours. And it was estimated potentially by an industry leader that this could yield a 25% reduction in truck traffic. So 70 less trucks on the road in a day is a significant decrease. And so is this a perfect scenario? For some, no. But at the same time, a 70% reduction, to me, for the residents of Central and White is better than no reduction. And so I'm hopeful that we'll see that significant of a reduction. As a goal and priority in 2023, 2025, as a top priority, we, as a council, discuss street maintenance and rehabilitation program. We are committed to three green alleys in the Central Avenue neighborhoods. I want people on Central Avenue to know that we take their concerns related to streets and maintenance seriously, and this council has already set forward that that is our priority. Related to the Northwest Arterial traffic concerns, again, that smart traffic routing with efficient and effective traffic system streets project that we had the work session on November 20th, I think will do a great deal for the congestion of our Northwest Arterial, the Highway 20, related to how we can utilize artificial intelligence to place traffic at different locations and reroute people, both residents and truck traffic. And then a goal of the Iowa DOT District 6 engineering staff to advocate for potential money to go forward with improvements of the Highway 20 and Northwest Arterial. I think that that is promising. I appreciate all of the stakeholders that have come forward. And I must say, in Dubuque, this is a beautiful example of how we work together. We come to the table, and we avoid divisiveness. It's great. We have come so far in the last six months of open conversation. And so I'm grateful for everyone who's come to me. I'm grateful for those that have shown up to find common ground with one another. This ordinance is not perfect, probably for anyone. But sometimes, as I have been told, the... That perfect is the enemy of good. And so perfect for everyone is going to look different. But to me, this is a way that we can collaborate and find support for our now and our current situation. I agree that I think the revisiting of this after our traffic study is completed is an appropriate time for us to re-discuss, and so I would advocate that that be maybe an open time for discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I really appreciate the conversation here and the comments that were made and sincerely appreciate everyone who came to the table to talk to us about this. We received a ton of input, and I know Mike did, too, and the city staff did, as we had some conversations about how this would impact everybody who's involved. You know, I don't know if I'd really be happy with any ordinance that we came up with here when it comes down to it because there are so many different people who are affected in so many different ways. And that's just the challenge that we face with this particular issue. You mentioned, Ms. Wethel, just now, you mentioned that street maintenance and rehabilitation program is a top priority. I'm sure we all recall that one of our high priorities is the Central Avenue revitalization plan. It has been for a number of years. What I hear from this council and actually we're building upon what the council before us really did was a priority that Central is changing. When the highway designation changed, there was major interest from the community to look at Central and White differently. And when we did the master plan that we did to be able to ask community input on this, that was basically the main input that we received. The residents and the businesses who are there want to build this around the residents and businesses who are there and make it a more pedestrian-friendly place. So in my mind, this is definitely not the end of this conversation. I think that we all need to recognize, everybody who's involved, so people who are in the trucking industry and transportation industry, everybody who's in the local businesses there on Central and White, residents who live there and who may be living there soon because housing is improving and expanding in this area. We all need to recognize that we're going to have multiple variables to address in the years ahead, and we have to think about how we're going to do that. So we need to start planning for that now and thinking about it now. It may not change this ordinance. This ordinance may stay the same, but it might. And I think that we are going to be having serious discussions, based on my conversations with community members at least, about turning this into a two-way street, both Central and White into two-way streets. And that will definitely affect how trucks move and how everything moves in that area. So it's, you know, this is one of those areas of town where all of us who've been here for a long time, we sort of have a feeling of what Central and White really look like and feel like, and it's been that way just forever. And I think it's changing, so we need to be ready to change with it. And this, I think, is a step in the right direction. I think this is a really hard conversation to have and figure out, okay, there's no good answer, so what's the best that we can come up with? So I commend everybody who came to this conclusion to set before us. And I do plan to vote for it because I think it is the best that we can do right now. But I think that as we move forward, we need to start thinking about this in what Central and White can become and not what they've been for the last 100 years. I think we need to think about how we can do that and what that means for all of us. And as we do that, what I would really encourage us all to do is to work our hardest to look outside of our own experiences and think about what the experiences are of all these other parties who are involved, which basically means stay at the table, keep talking, keep that communication wide open. I think that's how we came to a successful conclusion for this moment right here, but I think we need to continue to do that if we're going to continue to have success in this area. So thank you to everybody who's made this possible. It's a good step in the right direction, but definitely not the end of the conversation. I think we are going to be looking at this in the years ahead, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Just one closing comment. In government, there's almost never a perfect. The best you can do is find better, and we found better tonight. We're going to find better here pretty soon. And that doesn't mean it's best. We may have to keep looking, but better is what you get. And I'm proud to walk out here if we made it a little bit better.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Before you get on to the...
Go ahead, Mike.
On a related topic, so the last meeting, you approved the RFP committee for the traffic study on Central and White. And I had mentioned I was going to solicit additional non-city staff members. And so I just want you to be aware, I've had some volunteers, and I'm going to be putting Joe Kirk from Prairie Farms, Terry Mozina, who owns properties in the Central Corridor, and Rick Dickinson from the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation will participate in that RFP committee.
Excellent. Thank you very much for updating us on that. All right. With all that great discussion, we have a motion and a second here to receive and file waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion, pass at 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage to the ordinance.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion, pass at 7-0.
Action item number four is update 3,000 Jackson Street H&amp;W Building.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and hear the presentation.
Second by Russell.
Motion by Sprank, second by Russell. I should have asked before we even started this, is Alexis ready to...
She is.
Provide us with a presentation? Okay, thank you very much, Alexis. So I'm going to move right to you, Alexis, if that works for you.
Yes, that does work for me. Mayor, city council members, Alexis Steger, Housing and Community Development Director. So this last week, we met with the engineer from McClure as well as WHKS engineer that the city hired and Steve Emerson, the owner of the building. And at that meeting, they described all of the drawings that were submitted to the agenda item tonight and how they're going to stabilize that 3,000 Jackson side of the building. During that conversation, a lot of discussion about the north-to-south movement, which is what they're supporting and providing supports for. What was not discussed as much was the east-to-west movement, as they do feel like the building is twisting, not just falling to one side. So at the end of that discussion, we... The last question we asked of McClure was, when we are finished with this installation of these supports, will you be able to provide us the reasonable assurance that the building is stable? And that actually provided a little bit of pause for the engineer from McClure, as if it may not feel they could give that opinion once it was installed. So he did ask to be able to go back and look at the east-to-west movement. He requested additional drone footage as well as some of the other documentation that the city had of... the city had of historic pictures of the building during the last collapse and other things, just to ensure that there weren't any east-to-west stabilizations that also needed to be engineered as we move forward. That was last week. We're looking at this week having that response from McClure, if east-to-west stabilization does need to be installed and what that looks like, and drawing that up. During the conversation as well, the engineer from McClure gave us an update that they had re-engineered the stabilization on the inside of the Jackson-facing wall, Jackson Street-facing wall, to make sure that that was stabilized and resting on the actual limestone or cement as opposed to some two-by-fours, which could cause compression. So they did say they'd re-engineered that. The owner was not sure if that had been installed, and so we were asking to be on-site this week to ensure that it was, as that is an extremely important piece of stabilizing that building. So that was the update that was provided, and we expect this week to hear about the east-west stabilization. The owner was going to contact the contractor to make sure they could remobilize very quickly and get that crane back on-site, as the stabilization tiebacks would require that crane to be back on-site. So that's information we should get later this week as well. And I believe that is all of the updates that we have for you this evening, but willing to take any questions that city council may have.
All right, Alexis, thank you very much. I'm going to start with a question. So, you know, one of the goals of this conversation from the start was a push to get the roads open by the end of this year. It sounds to me like we are not there yet. You're still waiting on quite a bit of information yet this week to really make any sort of a safe determination of that. Is that correct?
That is correct. We do, I do not feel that the response from the engineer is going to be in a timely enough fashion to get it done by the end of this, this year.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions, then? Mr. Sprank.
If we end up, Alexis, if we end up dealing with snow, there are major concerns with neighbors about how we're going to handle that. I mean, you can't just pile snow up right in the middle of the street, so I guess we'll have to figure out, and this might fall under something more of the city manager a little, how you want to handle snow removal, if that becomes a problem, because did they, did the, did the owner give any idea how long, if the stabilization was approved, how long it would take to set that up?
So we do think that the stabilization, as long as materials are available, could be done within a week or within 10 days. It is something that the contractor was willing to do right away. With snow removal, we have actually talked to Public Works, so Ariel Swift, the Public Works Director, has had crews take a look at how to do snow removal on the streets that are closed and make sure that there's not additional issues with emergency vehicle access because of the snow. So we have a plan in place if that does happen, just because it could have snowed in November, so we wanted to make sure we had that plan in place. So we, we do know we have, equipment can fit down Jackson Street to access all buildings in case of an emergency, as well as we talked to the fire department, and they were confident that they would also be able to get equipments if there was an emergency down any of those streets as well.
Yeah, because there's a major concern, particularly with the property directly across from it, at 30, 3005 Jackson. They're really concerned with how that's all set up with the snow removal, being able to get in and out of their own driveway with all the barricades, as well as the gentleman on Washington Street at 2955 Washington Street. And these folks are like, I'd like to say they're kind of in the fall zone, and they have real concerns as to the delay, as to what's going on. So, yeah, we appreciate you keeping us abreast as to what's going on.
Okay, other questions?
Ms. Wethel, go ahead. I'd just like to share frustration. I, I wanted that road open for our residents January 1st, and I, I feel that it's, I understand that it's out of our control as a city, but I would ask that we have Mr. Emerson join us for each of these council discussions in the future. I think it would be helpful to hear from him, his perspective on process as well, and would encourage him to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, Alexis, thank you very much for updating us and for, for being here to update us for every single one of these meetings like this. You know, I hate to ask that we, we continue on with, with updates like this for one topic over and over and over again, but frankly speaking, I, I think the frustration level is so high on this, and the concerns from the community are so frequent that I really do think we should hear about it again at the beginning of January, especially since tonight you have, you've identified so many more steps that are being taken right now. I really do, and, and we had a deadline, and it's going to be missed already. So I, I think, I, I really do think that it would be helpful for us to provide the public with another update again on the first meeting of next year. So is that possible? Definitely possible? Okay, I'm seeing Mike shake his head, Alexis. So.
Yes, that's definitely.
Okay, thank you, and we really do appreciate it, and I know the community does as well. All right, I don't think there's any other information to discuss on that one. I'm not seeing any other questions or anything, so thank you again for the update. Motion is to receive and file there. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion, pass at seven zero.
Action item number five is agreement with QuickTrip Incorporated. QuickTrip Incorporated convenience store gas station at intersection of Cypress Road and Airborne Road.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Russell and a second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending city council approval of an agreement with QuickTrip Incorporated for off-site roadway and utility improvements at the intersection of Cypress Road and Airborne Road related to the proposed convenience store gas station site improvements in the southeast quadrant of said intersection, and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement. I concur with the recommendation in respect for the request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Seeing none, hearing none. I just want to thank everyone involved for coming to this agreement and figuring out a way forward here. Looks to me like it is going to work pretty well. All right, then, motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion, pass at seven zero.
Action item number six is amending taxicab driver licensing requirements.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting, although it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrian, I think I'm probably coming right to you, huh?
Yes, thank you. Adrian Brightfelter, city clerk. So this proposed ordinance amendment updates taxicab drivers' licensing requirements to match state code's classifications of a chauffeur. So city code currently requires that anyone who would like to obtain a taxicab driver's permit possess a valid Iowa Class D chauffeur's license, but it was determined that Iowa code includes a relevant exemption of a chauffeur classification, and the exemption specifies that a driver that has a taxicab with exceeding capacity of less than seven passengers and not operating on a regular route or between specified points is not classified as a brochure, as a chauffeur. So the proposed amendment specifies that taxicab drivers can possess a Class C non-commercial driver's license rather than a Class D chauffeur's driver's license if the taxicab they operate, operate has a maximum seating capacity of seven passengers. The city clerk's office would confirm taxicab seating capacity from the list of vehicles that taxicab companies provide to the city clerk's office when they either renew their annual taxicab business license or when there are any changes to the lists. And since most Iowa drivers have a Class C non-commercial driver's license, the ordinance amendment would make it easier for drivers to obtain their driver's permits, which is the feedback that our office received from the taxicab companies when we notified them of this proposed amendment. So that is all I have to say unless there are any questions.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Any questions or discussion on this? All right. Seems pretty clear and straightforward, so thank you very much, Adrian, for you and your work and your staff's work on this. Seeing no questions or discussion, motion here is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion, pass at seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage to the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion, pass at seven zero.
Action item number seven is police department supervisor wage compression.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sprank.
A motion that we receive and file and approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Sprank and a second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief of Police Jeremy Jensen is recommending a mid-year wage adjustment for non-bargaining unit command staff at the police department. Since fiscal year 2011, non-bargaining sworn members of Dubuque Police Department, which includes lieutenants, captains, the assistant chief-in-chief, have received no annual wage increases twice, fiscal year 12 and fiscal year 16, when bargaining unit employees did receive a wage increase, and one wage increase in fiscal year 20, which was significantly less than the wage increase given to bargaining sworn members. Additionally, in fiscal year 24, all sworn members received a 6% wage increase, the exception being the chief, who received a 5% wage increase. The cumulative effect of this wage compression between sworn bargaining and sworn non-bargaining has totaled a 4.75% loss for non-bargaining sworn personnel and a 5.75% loss for the chief since fiscal year 2011. The compression has caused a very minimal wage difference between top-step corporal and a new lieutenant. The non-bargaining sworn personnel are all supervisors. This requires additional duties and responsibilities. Additionally, non-bargaining sworn personnel do not receive overtime. Upon accepting a promotion, personnel also lose seniority as they go to the bottom of the seniority list for that rank. This often means losing good days off and good shifts. Pay is not the only reason a person takes a promotion, but pay does need to be part of that incentive. Additionally, to avoid compression in the future, all sworn non-bargaining will need to receive the same wage increases awarded to sworn bargaining unit personnel. The police department has 13 lieutenants, seven captains, one assistant chief, and a chief. I respectfully recommend mayor and city council approval to address the non-bargaining sworn wage compression of police department supervisors with a budget allocation of $80,482 from fiscal year 24 savings to provide 5% increases for lieutenants, captains, and the assistant chief, and a 6% increase for the chief. Sufficient savings exist within the current year of police budget to cover the expenses in fiscal year 2024.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion.
Overdue.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Russell.
Well, I, I think that workforce retention and attraction is, has been our top priority for our council, and we want our employees to be fairly compensated. And I think this is going to help us to retain high-quality employees that are going to serve our citizens and make us an employer of choice for these important public service. I think the, the recent study, it shows that over the years, the wage schedule has just gotten out of alignment, and it needs some adjustment to bring this back in balance. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other discussion here, I think, and I think the reason for that is because, based on our priorities this year, this, this council is kind of a no-brainer to, to bring this forward. So thank you very much for bringing this forward and bringing this to our attention. We, we really need to know this so we can make these adjustments in the ways that we need to make them. So, and I appreciate the work on this from a standpoint of city staff and the finance department as well, because, you know, this is, the, when you make adjustments like this, especially right before we talk about a new budget for the next fiscal year, it's never easy. And these are hard decisions that, that are coming for us, but I, I think, you know, and I keep saying this out loud, and I'm hoping people are listening, we're about to make some really hard decisions in the upcoming budget session. It's not going to be an easy discussion, but some of these things, I think, we can recognize are really important for us to move forward on, and this is one of them. So thank you very much, Chief, for bringing this to our attention, and Mike for recommending it. All right, motion here is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion, pass at seven zero.
Action item number eight is fire department organizational changes in wage compression.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to go with Ms. Wethel.
Oh. Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, and approve.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Wethel, a second by Russell. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Fire Chief Amy Schaller has recommended some adjustments at the fire department. The fire department completed an analysis of the current and future rank structure and is making a request to utilize available personnel costs within the fiscal year 2024 budget to make an adjustment to the administrative structure, provide additional support to the fire chief and the management and oversight of the fire department. This adjustment has three areas of impact: adjustment to the administrative rank structure, adjustment to the assistant fire marshal and EMS supervisor salary, and a summary of future organizational movement to be considered during the fiscal year 25 budget process through additional improvement package requests. On the administrative rank structure adjustment, the member requests the consideration of upgrading an assistant fire chief rank to a deputy fire chief rank and adding a civilian fire inspector to the fire prevention bureau. Ultimately, one assistant chief rank, fire marshal, would be eliminated in place of the deputy fire chief rank. The cost associated with adjusting an assistant chief rank to a deputy chief rank will be approximately $13,500 for a full budget year. The department would not be able to process the promotion for a minimum of 60 days. The potential maximum impact on the fiscal year 24 budget will be $4,500. The personnel cost associated with hiring a civilian fire inspection, inspector will be approximately $78,000 for the full budget year. The department would take a minimum of 90 days to fill this position. Potential maximum impact on the fiscal year 24 budget will be $19,500. The addition of the deputy chief rank will provide an important resource for the department. There is also a need to make an adjustment to the EMS supervisor and assistant fire marshal position salary to maintain parity and avoid compression of promoted ranks. The fire department could avoid compression issues between promoted positions and maintain alignment of the assistant fire marshal and EMS supervisor position with the police lieutenant position by providing a 10% and 5% fiscal year 25, 4 wage increase. A 6% fiscal year 24 adjustment to the fire chief position would match an adjustment being made to the chief of police position. The department submitted several improvement package requests for consideration of future positions, which will be reviewed independently during the fiscal year 25 budget process. $38,900 in funding would be required to support the request outlined above and is available from salary savings in the fiscal year 24 fire department budget. I respectfully recommend mayor and city council approval of the fiscal year 24 organizational changes, creation of a new civilian fire inspector position, and the wage adjustments.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion.
This one's even closer to perfect than the, than just better.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. So, see, there are a number of changes here. So see, there are a number of changes here. You know, actually, Chief, if you wouldn't mind, I, I wouldn't, I mean, you're here, you're stuck around for the meeting, so I figured I might as well call you up, right? I, I know I didn't do that, Chief Jensen, but if, if you could talk about some of the organizational changes a little bit, just to give us a better understanding of the long-term sort of implications of what we're looking at here, that, that would, it'd be helpful, I think, just to understand it, because this is a little more complicated than just the compression issue. This is actually a restructuring as well, so I'd, I'd appreciate whatever insight you can offer.
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, mayor and council. Amy Scheller, chief. Pretty exciting things going on at the fire department. A lot of really good energy. We're focusing on a lot of initiatives between negotiations and some of the other things that we have going with the budget. So when I was looking at some of the structure of the department, I saw a great opportunity to initiate something that I had in the back pocket for quite a while. In fact, one of the first things that I noticed when I was hired here in Dubuque, and that was an assistant to the fire chief position. Currently, our rank structure has five assistant chiefs. Three of them are on the operations side, and two of them are on administration side. And that rank is a really critical rank, but it's not one that's directly related to supporting me. One of the things I wanted to do is bring forward several initiatives, but timing and organizational behavior is so critically important, you can't throw everything at once. You really have to understand the organization first. So I think at about a year and a half now, being in the position, this is a, a very good time to bring this forward. So that deputy chief position wouldn't be possible if we made some realignments or readjustments right now and then closed that gap on that opportunity. So it's one of the reasons why it was discussed at this point.
Gotcha. All right.
Sorry, I had the hiccups.
No, it's okay. It's all right. Surprised to bringing you up anyway. Thank you very much for the, the explanation. Any other questions for the chief while we got her?
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Jones.
From my personal experience, one of the, one of the holes in the organization forever has been the lack of, of this deputy chief's position, of an apparent second-in-command that, that can fill a lot of holes for us. It's, it's a lot better now, but in the old days of paper budgets, Chief Dumphy would just disappear for two weeks. You didn't have a chief for like half a month because the guy's in budget all the time, and there was no heir apparent to fill the gaps, and the gaps were substantial. With the onboarding of a new chief, talking to, thank God for Cal Moch, essentially filling the role of, of a deputy chief during that time period, coming from acting fire chief, with the institutional history that Cal possesses, it was a fairly smooth transition, but would have been smoother had he already been the deputy chief in that position to, to help this transition occur and to, to keep things along. There's an enormous body of work in that department besides just putting out fires, besides taking care of injured and ill patients. And hold it all together are some very talented, our fire marshal's sitting out here, a very talented guy that has worked hard to, to get where he's at. We're lucky to have this talent that we have and the successes that we've had. They will only be better with that, with those extra hands of leadership and vision to, to help guide you and to help hold it all together. So thanks for bringing this forward. Really glad to see it, really proud to see it.
Appreciate it.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Chief. All right, well, motion here is to receive and file and approve this, so Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number nine is work session request, travel to Dubuque.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Waiting for the computer. I move that the city council set a work session for Monday, February 5th at 6:00 PM prior to our regular meeting at 6:30 for the travel to Dubuque annual update.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Rousell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next are council member reports.
Another year done. What reports do you have from the last year? We've got two hours yet. I'm just kidding. Mr. Jones.
Sunday afternoon, I had the great pleasure of joining my former colleagues and current colleagues and, and friends from all around the region as firefighters and dispatchers and law enforcement professionals from the city and the county, all converged on hills and dales with personalized gifts for each and every one of the residents and thousands of dollars in cash to support the organization, and it's been going on 25 years now. They think 4,900 personalized gifts have transferred over that period of time, and I can't recall the number of how many thousands and thousands of dollars of cash, but it's a huge impact for hills and dales, and it's a pretty big impact on those of us that get to participate too, so thank you all, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Nobody's taking me up in my two hours. Nobody even wants to give a report. Ms. Farber, do you have anything for us? It's okay if you don't.
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want, yeah, want to give a shout out to the University of Dubuque's physician assistant graduates this year. I was privileged and honored to speak at the convocation once again, and it was just great to see a cohort of about 25 young professionals step onto their new professional lives with great appreciation for the training and the relationship with the city of Dubuque. And so hopefully, we will have opportunities to work with some of these healthcare professionals in the near future, but it was great fun to see them and their parents, and we welcome them as alumni, not only of the University of Dubuque, but also as alumni of the city of Dubuque and hopefully, future residents. Thank you.
That's great. Thanks, Ms. Farber. Well, I'll close this out then, so, you know, and it fits with something I, I had the opportunity to do last week. This was a year of much more travel than I anticipated, to be honest with you, but I got invited to some pretty random things, and this was one of them. I got invited by a group that I'm pretty active with, the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative. We, as a city, are active with this group. It's all the mayors up and down the Mississippi River, all working together to try and put issues around the Mississippi River that we deal with, you know, front and center, in front of federal government and other, other partners. But this particular invitation was actually to travel to St. Louis, where MRCTI is, is based, and essentially brag about Dubuque. So they asked me to come and present on the B Branch project, and, you know, we've talked about the B Branch quite a bit. We're still kind of finishing things up there and talking about some of the projects that end that, but there's, there's a, there's an issue in St. Louis, in the St. Louis region. It crosses actually multiple municipalities that, it's called the River de Pere, and it's really kind of a, a long, currently kind of a long drainage ditch. It's different in every place where you go, but it's a really similar situation. They're having frequent flooding with it, and they're looking for innovative ways to get around it. And the director of MRCTI, Colin Wellencamp, who's joined us here at a few meetings, actually invited me there to present to the St. Louis City Council, some committee of the St. Louis City Council, and then also a committee or a group of residents and interested parties, far more people than I anticipated, to be honest with you, but I gave a presentation that was put together by Randy Gale, Kristen Hill, Darren Mearing, who joined us tonight, Terry Goodman, to be able to just talk about what we did with the B Branch and how that could work for pretty much anybody. And, you know, it was very successful, went very well. Everybody loved the project and loved the idea, had nothing to do with me presenting it at all because the project just speaks for itself. But it, it's a good way to close this year out, and, and the reason is, you know, when I get the opportunity to talk about Dubuque anywhere I go, and I think we all have this experience, people always have such great things to say about our community who have been here before and have traveled here, and I think everybody recognizes that every single community has challenges. We talked about several of them tonight, some tough ones. They're not going to go away by the end of the year. We're going to be dealing with them next time we get together in January and talk about them some more. But I do hope that as we close this year out, we can reflect as a community and as a council and as a staff about all the successes that we have had and the ways in which we continue to innovate and to push the envelope, think outside the box, and really come up with good ideas on how to solve problems. We're doing it, and we've done it historically in a, in a really wonderful way, and I know that we can continue to do it.